Remove item A from.
So moved.
Move. A second.
So.
And question. Yeah. We're out.
We're out.
Are we removing it not to come back, but to stay with it? Uh, we are removing it.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right.
Aye.
I have those. Any suggestions? Okay. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? As presented in the pack? Any questions? Hey, the standard's right there. Okay, at this point in time, we would like to give district residents an opportunity to ask any questions about this agenda or about operations within this whole district. Uh, we remind you, we cannot speak about personnel matters, but if anybody has any questions or comments, we're willing to listen. Please, I'll do one. Okay. Okay, item six, agenda changes. Anyone wish to make any changes to the agenda and let me check that we have in mind as well?
No. Not so many.
Okay, at this point, we have no correspondence. Yeah, we want to hear any reports. Uh, first of all, be the policy committee, Dr. Lynn Patek.
I didn't mean it. Well, can I explain? May I explain this one?
Yeah.
This is, uh, this came up when the board approved a higher substitute rate for members.
I'm sorry.
And it's okay. And, uh, and there was an unintentional, uh, thing that happened in, in light of board policy sixty. It seems so cool. Uh, and we, the board needs to approve the language, um, as, as we submitted, just the one small change. And, and let's find it in the packet, see.
Page fifteen.
Fifteen of fifty. So you could look at that, what this allows, what happens if you don't approve this? Is a person who comes in and volunteers to be a substitute cleaner at the twelve dollar and fifty cent an hour rate, after nineteen days, they come under this policy and they would actually drop back to eleven dollars and forty-four cents per hour. And they would also, it's also retroactive, so they would always back pay that attracted them to the job in the first place. They would get some personal time and some sick time, but really that's a, a very unintended consequence, so, um.
And medical coverage also, correct?
Yes, so this, this language allows them to work and we, we actually really need substitute cleaners. We had a cleaner opening, had no applicants, like today, we found out. So, we do need substitute cleaners. I think the twelve dollar and fifty cent hour rate is attractive. And upon your approval, it allows this employee to continue to, or any cleaner to work for more than the nineteen days and not go backwards.
Yes, there was some internal inconsistencies between the policy and the way it was stated and the way it went with others.
So, I'm just curious, if this person then gets hired, they're gonna drop back in salary?
They, they would, but this is for substitute, well, they would, but.
So you're saying.
But actually, the twentieth day, that, for all intents and purposes, the substitute has the same benefits, eh, other than maybe retirement, as a full-time person, correct?
I think every time, too.
So.
After the twentieth consecutive day, nineteenth, after the twentieth day.
So I'm all for approving this, but does, doesn't that mean we need to address the issue that we've gotta get these two things in sync? Otherwise, why would anyone?
Want.
Want to be hired as a full-time employee? I mean, I would.
So our entry level thing that we said at the beginning.
That's the underlying problem with all of these positions is the starting pay and the substitute pay.
So we need, have to go, we have to go back and fix the reorg decisions to change that entry level pay, which would change your numbers a little bit, too. And we're, so you're saying, if they actually came from a full-time job, they'd make less than they make as a substitute. So we can't attract them with actually our entry level pay, so we have to make them substitutes. And then lower their salary after they come. And believe it or not, this is what we need.
I do, I think I'd be serious if we sent you.
Well, but the other part that we're not saying is that usually when someone comes in and they substitute for those nineteen days in the same identical position, this is a pretty rare occurrence. I'll say, I'll start with that. It's a pretty rare occurrence where someone would come into a cleaner position and stay there for more than, more than even a couple, three, five, seven, ten. But when you get up to nineteen, that's a very rare occurrence. And, and in that's, in that setting, someone, someone came to our district and did that, then they would, uh, they might drop back to eleven forty-four an hour, but then they get the health insurance benefits. And this, this person would not necessarily, although we might have going to executive session for you to hear even more details, but.
They would after, after nineteen days?
After nineteen days.
They wouldn't get health benefits after nineteen days.
They would.
They would.
They would.
They're substitutes.
This is a, this is a, uh, mostly a summer position.
Okay.
And that, it tends to happen every summer where we look for this type of position, so to attract someone.
On, on the other hand, if I were the only applicant for a full-time position, I would never accept. I'd say, hire me as a long-term self. Because I'd be.
They haven't had any luck hiring empty cleaners, is that the issue? That's the issue underlying this whole thing.
It's, that's an issue.
That's the underlying issue.
That's a name.
That we, we're having a hard time attracting empty, uh, empty cleaners, even with the benefits. So they can be cleaners and get benefits and no one's taking that job. Really?
But I think several entry level positions are having a hard time finding the numbers.
Cause isn't the old philosophy, and it's my sense was, it still is for much of, many of the employees in the district, that they actually take the job for the benefits primarily, um, and, and not so much the salary? Cause that benefit package does cost us, are we allowed to say the number? Are we allowed to say the number?
Yes.
It's sixteen thousand bucks, right? It's sixteen thousand bucks. So, yeah, there's, there are hourly salary drops, but their cost to us, doesn't it go up?
Yeah.
And we can't let anybody to take those jobs to clean these things, to the cleaning place.
It's not anybody's, like.
Should we outsource cleaning? Haven't we talked about outsourcing cleaning in the past? Maybe it's time to start thinking about, maybe a Bosie service, I'm not, I, I don't, I haven't talked to Joe and I don't know how, he's smirking over there.
What? It's not to do about pesticides.
Well, I'm telling you, I mean, we have talked, I remember when I came on the board, there was some talk about outsourcing. Disruption, I mean, am I out of my mind or is this a realistic option? There are cleaning services and, wait a minute, didn't one of our former employees who we then hired back start a little cleaning service? I believe.
Yes.
So what, is there a discussion to be had about maybe rethinking the way we clean this much?
I, I think if we get to a point where we do not have applicants applying and we are so stressed out that we cannot get the work done, that we need to consider that as a negotiation.
So just before the book goes in.
We throw out, yeah.
Okay. I don't know, as long as it's a good idea.
But it has to be negotiated, we can't just outsource for that type of service because we do have, we do have an organized unit.
Yes.
Just like we can't outsource bus driving, even though there, we're always short bus drivers.
Cleaning services seem to me to be separate and distinct from transportation. Transportation is a much bigger operation.
Yeah, and I'm not saying I recommend either, I'm just saying it's part of a contrastive issue.
But it seems like this is a nice little discussion that, again, substitutes have brought up. This is our second, second interesting conversation in the last year about substitutes.
We may be having more.
So it seems like the workforce needs are more transient, you know, they sort of come for a little bit, leave and, but if we, if we had an agency or an outsourced operation, they could hire whoever they wanted, as long as they got the work done, they got paid for the contract, and that was that. I understand the necessity.
Yes, but unless they were, unless they were hiring from a larger area than where we are, they might be limited to the same population that would be interested in joining the job. And as Kimberly's pointed out, we have sort of packed out the TruMansburg area and a number of.
You have to negotiate your way out of that as well. That's not something we could impose.
Right.
You have to, that'd be part of negotiations.
I'm not gonna suggest that, I, I, far be it for me to suggest what we should or shouldn't negotiate, I have enough trouble in those situations right now.
Well, what, what I would ask, I mean, you, the, well, like, a lot of things have come up here. But what I would ask is that the board approve this, give us some time to get into the fall and maybe we'll come back. We, we tried to fix a problem and the fix didn't turn out to be as elegant as we wished. But this fixes what we need to fix right now and then we'll come back later.
I would also take a look at some of the other conflicting policies, not policies, procedures to have an internal conflict that would result in the same, right?
Then we can have some help.
All in favor?
Let's go with this.
Aye.
But it's a good decision.
Okay.
Yeah.
Aye.
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 Any thoughts or objections? Okay. Okay, so this committee.
Uh, yeah, so Joe's here, he can speak to, to some of this. Our DASNY project has been approved and we are beginning the preliminary, uh, steps to, to get this done during the mid-October? Is that what we're shooting for? At, I think after our, our last home game or right, right prior to that?
So, I got a proposal from Clark Companies and his own budget, so.
Not by much.
Not by much.
Not by much.
So, um, I wanna reach out to them and get more information.
If you can take it over sooner, if you take it over sooner and we don't need them tending to it more, that might help us in the contract. I don't know what their budget for the, for the growing party, after they lay it, if you think you got a guy and you're gonna get your eyes on it, that's not a tough time of year to grow grass.
Right.
So you probably could cut a fair amount, I'm sorry to make you speak to me about this, but.
No.
Um, if you find a way you can cut out the need for them to stay after boots, there's certainly money to remain there because they build in a lot of product and crap that, you know, they wanna ensure that when they turn the key, it's perfect to you. If we sort of feel like we know what we're doing and we take it over, I'm sure there's a leeway in the contract with that particular strategy. But I do think it gets high, right? Cause we're moving a lot of, we're, we're, it's a lot, but it's setting us up for maybe something else later on, right? Cause we gotta do that subgrade work no matter what.
Right.
It might not be the ideal home run, but, and if we, we got two hundred, two hundred?
Two fifty.
Two fifty, it's not over budget, it was two thirty-eight.
The two thirty-eight is just from Clark, we still have it in sales.
What's that, from, from, from Herzog?
From a different architect here.
Oh, man, why are we paying this here?
That's far, man. You know, wanting to do some.
So it's two thirty-eight, so you're saying that puts us over two fifty, by how much? Not much.
Not much.
So let's, 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 get Norm to have a conversation, get with Norm, Norm will sell you exact, I think somewhat exactly the same thing I would. He'll find it opportunities for us to get that lower, but Clark's really good, they'll do excellent work.
Well, that's, that's, I had a conversation with somebody today and that's what they said.
They're absolutely the best in the business, they're the only world to do this.
Yeah, if you pay a little, a little more upfront, you know, it'll come, it'll go.
That's right.
It'll be.
Yeah, it's not a Joe Patric, cause as much I love Joe, it's not a Joe situation, Joe's pretty good himself, but these guys are everywhere.
It's the beginning of the year, Kimberly has deep intentions at this point.
So, so, Joe, I think, I mean, I do think that the strategy of when we do it is a question, when you say the end, after the last home game?
Yeah, they're, he's ready to go.
Mid-October, I believe.
Yeah, and I talked to Jim Cattella from Clark and he said, we're ready to go, you know, just.
At that time of year, the only thing that holds him is rain or frost a little bit. Um, question about the soccer association that might get disrupted by us doing this? Now, what do we do, what are we doing to, with the, with the, with the Tegan Soccer Club?
Tegan, I mean, uh, Jim Cattella from Clark is talking about coming in like late October, so.
So are they done by then?
They're done like right around mid to late October, so.
Okay, cause I hate that, you know, I, I would look at not inconveniencing them as an important part of our schedule as well, right? Cause they, they use those fields a lot, they'll benefit from this in a big way.
So, so we'll come back to the Frank and Joe show in a few minutes when we talk herbicides, but. No, we're not gonna talk about, we're just gonna mention that there's gonna be further conversation. So Robonics last year was looking for further, um, space and, um, a, a little, I guess, better working, um, situation that didn't disrupt the, the flow of the academic program here in the high school quite as much. Um, and so we've decided to move them to the Morton Building. They seem to be, um, everything copacetic as far as they're concerned. Joe has done a nice job working with the interior of that building and getting things set up, so, um, they should have plenty of space to do that and everyone should be happy ever after. Um, we talked about a couple meetings ago about using the, under the bleacher storage area, um, and putting a Verdi trailer or two in there. Um, Joe had gotten some prices on used ones. Um, the Verdi is a family-owned company out of Port Byron, and so I have some connections there. Um, I've reached out to them, um, he happens to be the president of the Board of Education, so I've been his employee a couple times over the last three years. Um, and they're very willing to work with us personally, from the president of the company down. So I'm waiting for Joe to give these specifications, I guess, through, uh, Jim Drew at Bosie's.
Yeah, and he's putting together a drawing.
So stay on him, please, so he can move while the iron, strike while the iron's on.
I didn't send you.
Yes.
I forwarded the proposal I got from Verdi. And then basically it's an eight by forty.
Forty.
New.
New. Ask of you, ask that panel.
S E B. Right. So I'll forward that on and hopefully we'll end up, um, saving some money and, and working cooperatively with them. Concession stands should be ready for the, uh, home football.
Opener or? Uh, we're working.
We're working, okay. That is the hope.
That, that's the hope.
That's the dream.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and then.
If you build it, they won't come.
Exactly.
Right.
Then the herbicide issue of whether we want to or not, that should probably be a more private discussion between.
Well, I think we should just hash it out and we do or don't.
Oh, okay. So, here we go.
No, not now, it's for the facilities committee.
Okay.
We'll hash it out.
And then.
That comes.
No, I, I don't think so. I didn't wanna.
I'm excited.
So that's it for facilities.
And can I just tag on?
Absolutely.
That facilities advisory committee is really getting down to the importance. We've learned a lot, we've got a lot to consider. Uh, I'm gonna be sending an email to all the members saying, you need to attend the next two meetings, it's critical for this process. I, um, Kimberly and I had a conference call with Alan Poehl and Bill Silke on Friday, and we asked them to come with all options, with crayon sketches, so people could visualize what the heck we're talking about, and a description of scope. So, so at least we know basically where we're at and what we're looking at. And they, they were on the same page with that and they've asked Hunt to do that, so the next meeting will be very important. I believe it's September fifteenth.
Thank you, yeah.
Critical.
So it is the sixth and the fourteenth, or the fifteenth of September?
It's, uh, Thursday, it's Thursday the fifteenth.
It's Thursday the fifteenth of September?
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's going to be, if, if you wanna come to an inform one to see what's going on, this will be, yeah.
I will be there, um, September fifteenth.
So you want us there, that's what you said, I put on, you want us there.
Yep.
But we're just as observers.
Yep, we're just observers.
So that's it for facilities. Do you want me to move on to athletics? I'll move on to athletics.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, um. The Triton Titans are, um, up and, and running, we have nine players on, uh, the squad from TruMansburg. There's a total of about thirty, um, so it's a healthy number, um, and enough to, to be able to provide, uh, both an offensive and defensive team for the majority of the positions. So that's, that's the really good news. Um, the, the somewhat maybe disappointing news is that the local P W program had indicated to Jason and, and the athletic committee that this fall, they thought they would be graduating kids out of the P W program and that about eighteen kids would be joining the modified Triton Titans, um, program. However, their estimate was over-exaggerated, um, by almost, um, fifty percent. So we had thirteen kids actually show up and participate, um, and I think that might reinforce that notion that alone as a, as a separate entity, uh, we do not have the kids to be able to support, um, a standalone program, although that certainly could change over the course of the next four years with our agreement. Um, Jason's, uh, developed a Google document, uh, system for signups, which has greatly improved the efficiency of that program in terms of kids signing up for modified JV and varsity sports and has eliminated, uh, LeBron James signing up for, you know, varsity basketball or, or, or girls volleyball, that type of, of thing. So he's very excited about that. It's information that then is shared in real time with coaches, so they have an up, an instantly up-to-date roster, um, health, uh, requirements, et cetera, et cetera, so he's very excited about that. Uh, we've made some winter coaching appointments or will be, um, he's recommending Mike Myers, um, as a JV boys' basketball coach. Um, Mike is a PE teacher at Grattan, he has professional coaching license, um, and, uh, looks like Jeff Richards will be recommended, um, at some point in the near future for varsity boys' basketball. Uniforms, he's in the process of purchasing new sets of uniforms for modified sports, uh, which was our focus, they're the most outdated. Uh, some hand, hand-me-downs from varsity, uh, over a decade old, so, um, and also moving, uh, into the old high school copy room for a storage area, so, um, Joe's in the process of having his people put up racks and get that all climatized, et cetera, et cetera, for, uh, uniform storage. And then finally, there was discussion, um, and I think will be a recommendation to the board that we pilot a year of not charging students admission to athletic contests.
It's on the agenda tonight.
It's on the agenda tonight, so, um, John King was looking at this as a way to help increase, um, in particular, high school students' participation at, at home sporting events. So, does not preclude, um, middle school students and below being accompanied by an adult, so we're not gonna become a free babysitting service, which was, I think, a concern of, of some people, myself included. Um, so there's still that supervision aspect, we're, we're really geared towards the encouraging high school students. So I think we're asking for a pilot trial for this coming year.
Is there a way to gather, like, uh, do the students have card, have ID cards?
Yes.
Could they, are they, do they work a swipe card? No, no, they're just an ID card. So there's no way to track, it'd be sort of cool to know if the student numbers increase.
I think the Honor Society, John King had mentioned that the Honor Society is working toward that part system.
Yes. Yeah, because they are trying to, John, just trying to get in a system, sort of a, you know, rewards or acknowledgement system for participation in all school activities, so you'd get so many points for coming to games as a spectator, you'd get so many points for being in drama or yearbook or et cetera. And that is going to be kept track of, I think, by, um, either Honor Society or Student Council, so. So with some prizes and recognition at the end of the year, again, I think as a way to help, um, boost student participation in all aspects of, of high school life, so.
If I could just tag on to that, uh, some of those, um, coaching appointments, we did not, we did not see those until September twelfth. They just didn't all get in a groove and get on the.
Okay. Any other questions? We want to study the engagement.
Sure, uh, the majority of the discussion that we had was the result of the, the wording of the, the goals and mission that we'll be voting on later on tonight. And I'm sorry, I'm bringing this up right now, and one of them we were talking about was having some off-site meetings, but that didn't make it on there.
We, we're working on it.
Yeah, I understand why.
One site just, uh, evaporated, actually, as a possibility, and we're still checking on the other, so we're working on it.
Right, so.
The board changed.
Oh.
So now you don't got videos out of South Carolina, you know?
Uh, I'll tell you, by frankly.
Okay.
Um, so I don't know if everyone got a chance to take a look at that, but sort of, just because it's a, a somewhat of a new committee, it's nice to get consensus and know that everybody has a buy-in about the general idea of what we're trying to do on that committee, so, um, and my computer just died, so, um, so.
These were well, I, I mean, I wouldn't add, I mean, I, I liked them from, I saw these a long time ago. We haven't left this as a committee for a quick bit, it might be new to the board, so maybe if you could, I don't know, if you guys have had a chance to look at it, but, but certainly, I, I've been comfortable with this from the get-go, this was, you know, again, you know, seeing as a year ago before, or a year and a half ago before you were getting to this, we didn't have any of this. So I'm saying, this looks like we're moving in the right direction, it's always gonna, you know, can always get better.
Yeah, so one of the things that we're asking, uh, as a team, all of us, to take a look at the big events on the, the district calendar and see if we can't assign, you know, and I don't know how we'll do that, and maybe we'll come up with a mechanism for that at the next, yeah. So, and just handing out programs, yeah.
Look like the, look, look, logo shirts, the logo.
Logo shirts with the logo. Or jackets or sweaters or whatever.
That's good, I think that's good.
So, an informal but, but very present awareness of districts.
TruMansburg, Central School, that's important, right there.
Yep, right there. Logo shirts with the logo. Stand out, programs, open the door, bring people.
Yep.
You will be constipated and noted.
Cause I think the one way to do it too is, is, um, I know it inundates our calendar, but when Tina sends us those things, if we sign up for particular dates.
Right.
And then she can send those outlook invites for those dates, it popularizes the calendar, it certainly makes it really easy.
Did I send them out this year?
Yes, I did, I, I, I'm gonna miss that.
So, and we were talking about the Mondays, we haven't got, we're kind of trying to figure out what Mondays are left in the world because safety committee gets one, um, stand, another one, so we're just trying to find some Mondays. And, but the hope is, is that myself and one or two board members, or I don't know how many, will just go someplace on this campus, let everybody know far ahead of time, take some cookies with us and sit down and listen to people talk, ask questions, comment, whatever.
And it's not an action-oriented meeting, it's, uh, information gathering and just a, we're listening.
We're listening.
Yep.
Not board talking.
No, right.
That should be a problem.
We're taking you along, we're taking you with us. So, so we're looking for. So see a, an actual, like, oh yes, I really will commit mostly, uh, to one of these dates or events. And we'll talk about the polo shirt, so I don't know how we'll do that, but I think that'd be something.
Yeah, and I think that the cool idea about it is that if we can change the culture of the board to, you know, that this is a normal thing, you know, that it's not, where it's not, you know, one or two events a year isn't gonna, you know, it's not too much to ask, yeah. So I think that's the important part, is that we're studying, we're doing some culture.
I think one of the things that's important, we're engaging in dialogue with the, with the community, is we have a statement that says what we, what we can and can't talk about. A lot of times, they're gonna come and ask us stuff we can't talk about.
Right.
So I think listening is good, it's like, almost like an open forum. I do think there is material properly coached that we can speak intelligently about and what our logic has been and what the process has been.
And we've had some discussions about some internal develop, professional development on the, for the board along those lines, so I think that that will pair nicely and maybe we need to prioritize that in order to sign up for these events.
So good, good things.
And real things is great, so. Well, I think what, the whole idea from the get-go, Michelle, was to demonstrate that the community, we don't just wanna sit here and be board members, we wanna engage them, though some of us want to engage them. I keep my goal down, but I like doing it cause you think it's the right thing to do. I think we, they know we wanna be engaged in this in some way. I, I think that's what the goal's been all along.
Okay, any other comments, questions to add? And I guess we do have a, some, I don't have Bosie's.
A Bosie's report, but of course, we can report out on the meeting we had, um, with Gary Stewart. And.
That sounded really cool.
It was, it was wonderful.
It really was.
Just us.
It was really.
Well, just that, then people would tend, it was.
It was Steve Berg and Cornell.
But the only people that were there was just the school, and Adam Day came as well as Douglas Michael and Michael. And there were two other people.
Gary Stewart and Ken Flotter.
Ken Flotter. And then the lady, uh, worker of extension.
I did not get her name.
Executive Director was a part of all.
Uh, the executive director of ACE, she's the lady, um, she talked about being director of ACE. It was in my email to you yesterday and I just don't have that from you, so.
So this is in support of our staff stuff, Douglas?
Um, just in support of the program in general. Yeah, I mean, we look to cradle the career for all students, which we've been sort of talking about. Um, every child should have the opportunity to reach their full potential and such. Um, um, let me see. Uh, Bosie's is currently linking agriculture and food crap, and so are a number of other organizations in town. So I think that's a way we'll really be looking, so we have the house and we'll probably be doing some of that ourselves. Um, they mentioned that Grattan is a good example of a district that truly is focused on career education at this point in time, so I would. So I would recommend we do a little exploration of what they're doing.
Does Corelco, are we working with Groton though?
I'm not sure.
They sure know about it, though.
It was, Gary was the one who was talking about it, not Ken, so, and Ken, I think that's Cooperative Extension. And then Ethan Crampton from Cooperative Extension is doing after-school programs that are linked to careers in so many schools. So I think that's another thing we might want to investigate. ACE, or Access to College Education, which they also run, provides a program for college readiness in concert with the Public Science Center. And, excuse me, Public Service Center, which is run through Cooperative Extension. And Gear Up is the federal grant program that's associated with that. Cooperative Extension also offers parenting classes for parents, both, and grandparents. They also have a wonderful program, I gather, for parents on how to approach the new math, which is something any number of parents would appreciate. On Wednesday, November 2nd, from 8:00 to 11:00, and I assume that's AM, at the Green Start Spare Space across the street where Enterprise Rent-A-Car used to be, they'll be showcasing their programs. So that's an opportunity for any of you who are interested in taking a look at that.
I heard that's a nice space.
It is.
I think that they were using that quite a bit for some professional development things. It'd be interesting to hear.
And then they also offer a Skills Trade Diversity Institute, which showcases careers such as welding, plumbing, electrical work, et cetera. So that although we are currently not offering that at BOSIS, they're at least being exposed, getting exposed to those trades through Cooperative Extension. And that's all I have on that.
Well, officially, when we got the notification, I think we had thought it was going to be for Renee, for careers in counseling, and have her have an access to some of that information. But in some of the ways that he was explaining, initially, he said, "Corel does best if you ask questions," rather than, you know, go and say, "What do you have to offer?" It's like, "This is what we need. Do you have anybody that could help us?" The other thing he mentioned that I thought was really excellent, and within the community engagement, is that their work-study program, they frequently are looking for projects for their students to be able to complete, because they want real-world models. And I had, yeah, I told him that, "Hey, how do you set up a survey that will give us information that we want, rather than information we already know?" And he said, "Yep, this would be something that we could definitely take advantage of." So it's not just having it with career counseling and opening it to various, there's a lot there. We just need to be creative about what do we, what do we need? What would we like to see happen? And then think, okay, see if Corel can help.
Well, you know, Bill McGal's work is a good example of this, right? He started out, like, calling me and saying, "Hey, you know anybody we can sort of get with, scientist that could spend the day with them?" And now he's got a full-blown day, that the kids come from the middle school, you know what I'm talking about, all over there. I think it's a measure of the place is so intricate and big that it's like you bite the tail of the whale, and then you realize, oh, there's a whale attached to this thing. And I do think you have to ask, I do think there's lots of creative areas to use that place, but I do think they don't have a brochure. They're just not organized. We think in terms of departments and colleges and tenure and research dollars and not, and how can we help our community as faculty resources for things. So I do think, the more we ask, I think the more we're gonna find how rich that relationship might want to be.
That's what he was actually explaining, is the fact that we have to do our thinking, we have to do our homework, figure out what's going on, because that's a very important part of it. If you just go buy a product, it may or may not work the way you want it to, it may not fit your need. But if you can identify what your issue or your problem is, and then go to them and can say, "Oh, no, we just might have something." So we need to be open and nimble and think out of the box.
And they do have a brochure, which includes sciences, social sciences, mathematics, and general education, and programs associated with them in the community at this point in time. So maybe I should get a copy made of this.
And the other lady's name was Susan Riley, Deputy Director of Community Relations.
Then I also just have a very brief report from CNY, and that is that they are offering their first president's workshop. And Jane, I think I sent you, I tried to send you the brochure. And that will be, what, September? Oh, no, I've lost the date. But it's not this Thursday, it's the following Thursday. Beginning at 5:30 at Bass Downs, in Survese. So if Jane or our Vice President are just in the going, I certainly will be there. And we'll be going to drive. And they offer, they're gonna be offering a lot of information on Board Presidency, how one operates, et cetera, so.
President, thank you. Okay. Anything else? Danny, for event supervisor's reports, I think Edgy.
We have a desktop on the left.
So summer curriculum, Sarah, I'm sure you can speak to it much better than I, has been happening for many years. Michael, I thought it would be nice to report on some of the changes that were made this year, and some of the numbers that go along with it. Summer curriculum is when teachers apply to do projects over the summer, curriculum projects over the summer. They need to apply for that, they need to talk about the hours that they're using, there's focuses that we like them to work on. The handout is not mine, I wish I had this beautiful handout. This is from BOSIS, so this is one thing I'm gonna talk about, is a new option that they have for their summer curriculum at BOSIS. But first of all, this is just the numbers. There was increased funding initiative for summer curriculum and an increased focus. So you just look straight up the numbers, I put, at least for the last few years, there's been $16,000 added to summer curriculum. Funds about 600 hours. Part of that's paid by us, part through BOSIS. This increased this year, and then there was some additional STEM and project-based learning money put in there. So if we look, we almost doubled our hours for summer curriculum this year. It allowed us to say yes to a lot more projects. It allowed us to fully fund a lot more projects. Often, teachers would apply for a 20-hour project, they'd get funded for 10 hours. Were they still really doing a 20-hour project? Yeah, they were still really doing a 20-hour project, but only they paid for 10 of those hours. Now, we had about 70 teachers total in the district do some form of summer curriculum. You have some teachers that do four or five projects, a lot of group projects together. That's the really nice part about it, is teachers are able to collaborate, you know, across areas, across grades, really dig into the, I have some examples coming up, but really dig into projects that they just simply don't have time to do, or is a scheduling nightmare during the year. There are a total of 59 projects. Teachers have to apply for summer curriculum. These are the priority topics that were set by the district. So in their application, they're talking about, you know, how many hours, who's working on it, why they chose this topic, and then they have to link it to one of these priority topics. I don't think this should come as a surprise. It's the things that, you know, we really as a board and as a district talk about.
Can we go back for a second? So we have about 100 teachers?
One faculty? It's like 118, including counselors.
Okay, so we're pushing close to two-thirds of our faculty to work with us in the summer year, really? Is that pretty common? Where do we know about that number? How that is, how's that compared to other districts? Is that pretty clear, that about two-thirds of the teachers are doing summer curriculum development in districts? Seems like a good number to me.
That seems like a great number to have, yeah. I mean, 70% of your staff come in when they're 10-month employees.
Yeah, depending on the money allocated to them.
I think it's a great, they have teachers willing to come in for the...
Do you think it's only made by the amount of money we allot to it? Do you think if we allotted enough money, you'd get 100%?
Traditionally, we are obligated to commit $16,000 to it every year.
And that's what we've always done.
And we've grown that funding source, because we do run it through a BOSIS coaster. So the money that we put into that started at $16,000, and of course, we get aid back on that, and then we return those funds back to the coaster the next year. So that leap is in part because of the investment we've made in how we run the money through the coaster at BOSIS. So we are up to $30,000. It's one of those numbers that we have this year, but as you know, with every budget season, that's something that could be at risk. But we, this district feels strongly that we want professional development for our teachers, we want to improve what we can offer our students, and we have to invest in our teachers to do that. So we've made this a priority, and that's how we were able to do it.
I mean, I don't think there's any question, this board wants the teachers to avail themselves in professional development, particularly as it relates to enhancing the quality of education around here. I don't think this board would ever block it, sort of moving that along, but is that the answer? It's in the contract? It's in the teacher's contract?
But teachers wouldn't have any idea of knowing how many other people applied, and, you know, whether they got this because it was increased spending, I mean, there wouldn't be that knowledge. So I think that you have teachers that are ready to dig into projects, especially that project-based learning, a lot, I shouldn't have come up with that number. I would say a lot of the projects were STEM and project-based learning focused.
Well, 200 of the hours were between STEM and project-based learning.
I bet even more had a flavor of that, too. That's what we funded with that, but I bet even more had a flavor, because they're time-consuming, too, to do a project-based learning unit and to work across disciplines takes up the time that you don't have unless it's summer.
We're best to teachers to make a lot of changes, dramatic changes, really quickly for the last five or six years. I mean, the least we can do is sort of, you know, invest the dollars to, you know, do that. We just need them to be as good as they possibly can, if they want to do this. I don't know what the culture of summer curriculum is. I don't know if it's like, oh, you just put it in there, or you just go and get your 20. It seems like real good stuff happens out there.
They're required to turn in, you know, the project, I don't have that as the last slide. I mean, I got everything from website links, teachers develop websites for parents to use, or Google Docs, or the whole...
Don't you think they'd hear about it at some point? Don't you think? If we are ramping up like this, that maybe we invite some of the people you...
And I've got a couple of examples in here. Yeah, I think that'd be a great idea.
Angie, where is the training given?
So, teachers can work here, and usually they're working in groups. A lot of the curriculum projects are five or six teachers working together. This year, the flyer that I handed around, it's the first year that TSC, which I think is a great idea, came up with this unit planning for all learners. They rolled it out a little late, but they have, you'll see these three series. So what it is, is every district was invited to, if you had teachers who were doing summer curriculum, our teachers could choose to do the project that they chose, with their group of teachers physically at BOSIS for those three days, and they'd have access to the special ed specialist, the ELA specialist, the math specialist. So they were still working on their own project, but they were in a setting with other districts. They wanted to bounce ideas off them, and had access to specialists. It was very teacher-driven. I think it's a great idea.
The first year we've done it through BOSIS, or have we retained?
Sarah, I think that was the first year, I think it was the first year.
I thought so. They did the first one. And I know that the BOSIS...
That we paid the BOSIS.
No, that the BOSIS board does get reported on teacher satisfaction with some of those.
We only had a handful of teachers attend. I think we'll have more next year. It was rolled out a little bit late, and great feedback. Even just like, you know what, we were working on our project, and Groton was over there, and we decided, hey, let's go over and ask them what they do for this math unit, you know? I mean, just, I think that all those minds in the room.
With the opportunity to collaborate.
Together.
Yeah, it was great.
But Frank, to answer your question, physically, most people are coming in here to our buildings and working on it.
Did part of this project go to any reading recovery program for the summer for students? For this year?
So at some point, it seemed like we had discussion of somehow diverting some of this money so that it could be taken advantage of by teachers throughout the school year. Has there been any follow-up to making that become a reality, or no?
There's additional funding that was budgeted for $16,000, $17,000, and an additional $50,000, and we put that under the umbrella of STEM. So that is still available.
If they wanted to continue stuff during the school year.
Part of what? Gary was referencing is to kind of make summer curriculum that whole methodology and protocol year-round, rather than summer. And we actually had sort of a tentative agreement with the PTA in our negotiations, and then it's sort of been set off to the side.
So this would be allowance of time during the workday?
Yeah, well, during the year. So teachers who maybe wanted to get together on a Wednesday evening from...
Five to eight.
Five to eight, for three weeks to work on a project-based learning unit.
And then we pay the salary for those.
So the voluntary and the outside work hours in order to, you know, summer.
They get paid. So it would be a good thing we could do it. We have the funding, we just need to...
Work out the mechanics. I mean, it seems like if we've gotten the contract for $16,000, I'm not sure we want to, we want to be changing the contract number, that's never...
That's correct. We don't want to change the contract number, because when the state aid comes in and it's good, then we want to have the ability to put the funding where we feel the needs are. But when the funding is reduced, it's probably an item that we would choose to reduce versus personnel. So we need to have that flexibility. If we change the number in the contract, there is no...
But our intent is to push as much as we can to get everybody to train what they want or need.
Well, I think one of the things, Gary, that you just mentioned is a great idea. I mean, if we could stagger throughout the year, because if you think about the possibilities of creating different projects or programs throughout the year, then in fact, we could flip it and have students get invested in the programs throughout the summer. You know, teachers can trial those projects or those programs throughout the summer, and then you're giving, you're building the teacher learning, but then you're building the student capacity and learning throughout the summer as well, which I think is...
Even like a book study.
Right.
I mean, there's so many possibilities.
So some of this, you're suggesting bringing kids into the summer, like a summer school?
Well, I think it just lends itself to more possibilities. If you can create project-based units.
Oh, but during the school year, not in the summer.
Well, you certainly could do after-school programming that could support some of the projects throughout the school year. But in the summer, you know, there's not a lot, I mean, there's pretty extensive camps in this area besides the play school through T-Bird. But I mean, there's ideas of, you know, expanding STEM, and I think some ideas could be pushed throughout the summer. You know, if a teacher wanted to give a, you know, a two-week program around conservation or around...
As a task.
Kind of STEM.
Well, look at the success of Camp Adventure.
Right. Or the hoop house. They want to build, let's build a hoop house together. We're gonna do that this week. Let's do a project where we bring kids in to then learn how to do that. So you're building student, you're building teacher capacity throughout the year and the summer, and student capacity, of course, can connect to that in some of which, you probably, you know.
Well, I tell you, what it brings for me is that big stat, right, that how much economically disadvantaged kids struggle to get back up to the same grade level after a summer of, I don't know, we have a name for it, what is it?
Summer slide.
So this would be an opportunity, we, if we could get our economically disadvantaged folks in, I don't know if that's a possibility, but certainly, that, when you do the summer, we know that that would really help us in many ways, moving towards the full-year school thing.
And keeps the learning.
Well, as teachers, you know, in my sense, as teachers, I think, I would say, I'm just about at it, but if you comes around, want to get away for a little bit, I can understand that completely.
But if it was two weeks as opposed to a six-week summer school, there's a huge difference in the type of two weeks, and I'm choosing those two weeks, as opposed to locked in as six weeks of summer. That's interesting.
Okay.
Take a couple of projects.
Yeah, a couple of projects. The slides got reversed, doesn't matter, but just to give you an idea, I mean, you saw that there was, you know, 50-plus projects on there, a few that I thought were particularly interesting.
What happened was that notification thing, we needed it.
So there's a couple. Certainly, if you want me to come back and bring some websites or bring some teachers to show your presentation, I think, you know, all of that's coming in now as summer ends. I think it would be a great idea.
Might it just go in the future, that this first board meeting before school, it's a nice to know the summary of the summer curriculum, that'd be great, I think.
Or to season some of the student learning from some of the projects that we've done. You know, I think I would rather see the kids learning here, because then you get the teacher capacity behind that, you know.
Love that idea. Love that.
Okay.
Love that.
Okay. Ah, that was just reversed, there's a couple of other ones. And really, the final projects, as I said, they came in, everything, people had made websites, people had packets of handouts they were giving to parents, they had Google Docs, there were whole units they had planned, it was really interesting to see the actual physical of what they came up with, yeah. And such a lot done quite, yeah. Good?
Great, this is great, Angie. You know, it's always been this thing, right, we just sort of go on haphazardly and, oh, yes, I'm.
It's a big deal.
It is a lot of work.
It is.
It's nice being intentional about it.
We're going to have summer curriculum.
It's not only a lot of work, it's a lot of money.
Yeah.
I mean, it is. So having been in this district with that amount of money, we're talking, you know, half a million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars I've seen go into curriculum over the course of the time I've been here. That is a lot of money. And I think, so I think to piggyback on Sarah's idea, it would be great to see the learning product, not the piece of paper that's going on the shelf in terms of curriculum, but in terms of actual student learning. So I think, one of the things I think we've done quite a bit in the past is talk about or mention ideas and then they sort of drift off. It would be good if we could get a parking lot somehow on the agenda to talk about these types of things and make sure that every board meeting, we're getting a reminder to say, let's not lose track of that idea that we want Angie to come back in and present this, or we want.
Put it on your to-do list.
We want to talk about, you know, changing the hourly wage for the substitute cleaner or whatever the issue is.
You put it up on the do.
Right.
You know, a lot of that planning is, we want this in August, or let's remember to look at that in March and June and May next year.
I'm just sort of curious, I was just asking sidebar, Sarah, I mean, is there a, is there, do we believe there's a latent demand for students to be participating in these types of summer activities? I mean, Camp Invention is personally at the scene, my sense is.
I think camps are very expensive.
So if you're saying to me that we're going to give our teachers a chance to, is it, I guess my question is, is it a logistical nightmare to bring the kids here in the summer?
What if you tacked it on the weeks that play school ended, doesn't play school end like the second week of? I think if you were redundant, if you did it at the same time as the town was running the play bus and play school.
Right, you could do it to get there, you know, I think the.
I just think you have to, you have to look at all the details because you still need to get the buildings.
I think.
Wax, they're shut down.
No, no big deal.
I don't know if you've had the population, I mean, transportation.
You're not required.
I think the big statement there was kind of to explore more opportunities for summer that might be similar to Camp Invention that are affordable to both the district and if there's, well, free to students hopefully, but we'd have to budget for those. You're sort of going to bring in five teachers for five days and for their pay, what is that?
Well, they're going to budget in the grant they ask us for. This is part of the grants that they're asking us for for the summer curriculum development, isn't it? Is that what you're going to?
We're talking about two different things.
Oh, we're talking about two different things.
Are we?
What was your question?
Well, so I thought, well, if you're talking about teachers' teaching during the summer, that has not been, to the best of my knowledge, the intent of summer curriculum projects.
Correct.
So you are talking about two different things. You just added something different.
So it's that idea that Gary was saying, that if it were to, we were to push things throughout the year of professional development, which is now one of our goals, which is great, then there's more opportunities for teachers to be creative so that in that summer, we could potentially offer these opportunities for activities for students, but not something that we do now. I think we've used the money slightly for reading recovery, we've used some, but maybe it was through Title II dollars that we've used through reading recovery in the summer, which is great because it stops that summer slide, but it's not specific to a topic of interest, it's not specific to something like a STEM.
It's a skill.
You know, the STEM area, you know, you want to expand the STEM area, well, that's a perfect opportunity to bring in, you know, something very specific around, you know, science topics or engineering topics or a math challenge or.
But I guess I just need to be clear, if we're going to ask the teachers to potentially offer this to the summer, that, I thought that was part of the curriculum development, you're telling me it's actually they're going to come and teach and we have to pay them as teachers? So that's a totally different number situation.
Which needs to be visited, right, because that number has not been visited in a very long time.
Yeah.
And to my knowledge, years ago, when we tried to get individuals to teach summer school, that number is so outdated, we can't get takers.
Right, well.
The summer school pay rate, it's a.
Right, we had this, we've had this thing in the past, so this is a parking lot issue, it sounds like it's another long-term discussion.
Start in the boardroom again.
Let me say, can I just, can I capture, so what kinds of summer learning experiences can we explore that are similar to Camp Invention but free to our kids?
Not free to us.
Free to our students.
For us.
There we go. Do you know what question we need to answer?
Good, all right, thank you, ma'am. If we want to add an eleven, which is consent adjutant, anyone we should pull any of the recitements now? Now, any motion for exception?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed for exceptions? Okay, we can launch a new business. Okay, I think A, Dr. New of the Community Engagement Mission and Goals.
Shall move.
Second. Okay, I'm discussing, I think Michelle and Kelly used to come earlier, but do you want to elaborate on that at all?
Unless I have another question.
No. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed for exceptions?
Question.
Okay.
Okay, the, I can't look those. Let's bring them up, we have a new addition, you're not going to leave this, but we have a new addition.
As of.
And actually, I gave you a.
Five forty-five.
Well, we'll put them up.
Okay.
Wow, I just have a great seven, where did that come in?
What's? Okay, these goals are a result of lots of conversation, lots of discussion, not to work with Michael Schpart and staff part, being able, and administrators have been able to come together as with a consensus to say, okay, this is where we want to go.
Shall we move, are we moved and seconded?
Nope, we haven't, so.
Shall we move? So we're in a discussion.
But it's getting brighter, in other words.
Yes.
I think we're almost there. If I could just chime in, what did you say? As you know, you've seen several summary documents, there's been email conversation, entries into the Google Doc, and a meeting at five o'clock today for further conversation, there was about six or seven of us here, and we focused in on goal two at seven, which really have generated the most conversation and input, and really had a divergence of direction. So where we ended up is this document, and really the key part of goal two is, you will see, I'll just read it, the TCSD Board of Education will provide the necessary resources to create, that's key, an individualized career slash college plan for every student beginning in grade seven, that's key, and ensuring, we're still leaving that word in there, all TCSD graduates, A, complete at least one year of college credits documented on their transcript, and/or B, completed meaningful internship in a work environment. We took out twenty weeks of an internship, we need Renee Ailsworth to do her work this year to see what's really doable, so we just made it, complete a meaningful internship in a work environment related to their career, and C, complete a senior capstone project that includes an internship, or, and this is new, D, for those students who, for whatever their pathway through Charles Oakley Jefferson High School involves college classes and credits, involves an internship, is related, but somehow doesn't get A or B or C, we thought that we would add D, complete a combination of coursework experiences reflecting the intent of A, B, or C approved by the principal. And as we get into this farther and farther, we had a great conversation, John King has a support team that meets every Monday at two o'clock, and they focus on students who might be struggling. Well, perhaps where this goes is that John King's support team might meet once a quarter or a couple of times a year, and they focus on all the students who are doing well, and just say, how are they doing on A, B, C, or D, and kind of review that information as they go through high school, and we certainly wouldn't be focusing on the seniors, it's too late, probably need the freshmen and sophomores as they begin to get into high school and further their career interests.
Well, it sounds like the math starts in seventh grade, so I guess that means resources for him, you, your building, your teachers, the concept.
Well, I had a question about that, so why, where did the grade seven, why did, why are we choosing to begin there?
Well, we have only one career counselor, and we picked that as the place for the student learning plans. I'm not sure we have the resources to manage, again, this can change, and we're learning a lot this year with our new position, but we picked that as for, we felt like that was a doable, realistic goal for now. We don't, we didn't think about having student learning plans K through twelve.
We wanted, we knew this concept to evolve and to move in a direction that we weren't so blocked in that we only had one way to go, just to wait and see how it shakes out and what you need, what resources, and how we might be able to pull other people in, because I think our ultimate goal is to be able to have at least something similar to that to grades much younger and expose those grades to all sorts of career opportunities and occupations and skilled trades.
Do you think I should start somewhere?
Well, I think the distinction is.
It's about that plan.
Plan, right.
It's a plan.
It's the document that says we're going to.
Not the programming.
As opposed to generically.
Exposing you to different careers.
We even had at the five o'clock meeting, another conversation about that, Doug has brought up, this is, the plan starts in seventh grade, the programming, the exposure, I hate that word, exposure, but you know, the intent is there, starting as early as kindergarten.
And we also wouldn't be at all surprised if their interests changed from one year to the next, depending on what they were exposed to. That would be the hope.
That would be the hope, absolutely.
That's right.
Or they're confirmed.
Oh, or confirmed, yeah, okay, thank you. But no one's stuck.
So goal three is, pretty much.
Read it right off.
So seven was the other one that you guys were willing?
Yeah.
At this point, I will say that goal four, I really want to have, we have not had time as a leadership team to pick the real benchmarks, but we need that because without that, we don't, we can't really measure how well we're doing, you know, with the op-ed rate, we're really handicapped in that area, we just don't know how our students are doing against the standards, so we are, when we look at the standards, so goal four, we'll get on that this fall, because we really do want.
We need our teachers here to help.
Yeah, we want to get a sense of what's realistic so that we can really come and say, hey, we're really doing well, or we need to work on this area, so.
Based on the proficiency in testing?
But on a test that's valid, reliable, and.
And such a test exists?
Well, there's some.
I don't think it should be any one data point, right? So should we use multiple data points for, so it's really using what we already use, but to just give you, we use it for instructional purposes, but to kind of show you where our students are at. I think it's actually going to be pretty easy.
A variety of assessments.
Well, it's actually. They'll say benchmarks, it's plural, so.
Internally.
Well, from our perspective, we need to, I think that's what we've got to figure out, right, you guys are going to tell us what those should be at some point.
And I think that it probably should say, as determined by the RTI team or something like that, because we change, they, you know, we change them based on new assessments that come up that are better, that, you know, I hate for us to give an assessment just because it's part of a board goal, we've decided instructionally it's not useful anymore. So it needs to have a little bit of flex in there.
We haven't picked it, so.
It's actually.
We haven't picked it, so. So it's kind of, that was one of the ones that is a work in progress by the way.
I mean, you wouldn't have to specify what they were.
Right, no, that's, I think, or, you know.
I think you'd get a lot better, you will get a lot better recording, the board and the public will receive a lot better information for those benchmarks.
So goal six, continue to develop and utilize vertically and horizontally aligned pre-K-12 curriculum, our conversation around that translated is we're working on the matrix, and we are working on it, so maybe by the end of this year, we'll have one pretty much done. What do we have?
Six.
Six, you have two sixes there?
No.
No, the other one's a five.
Mine's a good time. We'll expand programs and interdisciplinary curriculum that support science, technology, engineering, and math STEM education for K-12. I think that's just a stronger statement than we pilot, explore, we're expanding programs.
I mean, that's the evolution of these goals, just like goal number two is our first shot at that particular one, and in three years, it'll look very different then, because we'll have data, that's part of the deal in making these measurable, right, I thought that was the whole idea.
Yep.
That's how they evolve, when we measure them, they're useless if we just feel, we had fielded goals, correct?
Yeah.
Now, these are real sort of metrics, or something.
Yep. Goal seven, the district represent, recognizes the vitally important role, I can see it a bit better, I'm sorry, each teacher, staff member, and administrator plays in the success of our students to that end, the district will offer high-quality, research-based professional development for all district staffs. After lots and lots of input, that's what shook out.
Yes.
I hope you like it.
That's good.
It's really, that's really a word of art there.
That is a word of art.
Goal two and goal seven are words of art.
Well, I think the sort of second sentence in its simplicity is just beautiful, it's just a few amount of words that says exactly what we think.
Uh, goal eight, these are our sure goals, we'll maintain a fiscally responsible.
We got to get rid of that. Can we get rid of goal eight?
We all want to have that goal.
Safe and.
What's that?
Safe and encouraging learning environment, that's something that we have, we can take
a lot of pride in, but it's a great goal to keep.
Well, and we have a new security system in all the buildings, right? And we have a new safety plan we're going to vote on tonight, so.
We'll entry to the high school.
I think that there are actually some real things that when you put the dashboard up, you'd write that on there, these are the things we've done towards that goal.
I think the other key piece of that is PBIS, which is in our elementary school and our high school, you just don't see that in many districts where it's in all three levels. There's a sense of respect and safety behavior across our district. And then the last goal is maintaining and acting an open dialogue with the community, and that's super talented, the board, and we're going to take some concrete steps this year to activate that one.
These are best goals we've ever had in my nine years, you've been on longer than me.
Well done.
Believe me. Best we've done.
Better than we've ever had.
Well, everyone, congratulations, I had not a single.
You were the inspiration.
So it's time to accept and change.
Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed for exceptions? Okay, the thousand sixteen, seventeen goals are published. All right, all right, moving on to IBC. Okay, this, need a motion to accept the new.
Shall we?
Everybody has had a chance to take a look at it.
Great.
Any comments or suggestions, others have been well read.
That's good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those were the mentions. Okay, can we see it? Oh, where is it? I think it was under Word Active.
Uh, let me see, let me see if I got it.
Jerry, you've got one, twenty and twenty-one.
I think there's a sort of, there's a little revision.
Update of the, you know.
Waterfall.
Sort of cleaner version of the whole building, looks like it tighter lines and.
Yeah, they're updated. Yeah, they're updated.
You know, as long as someone's you can do.
And despite the fact that Joe insists that it looks like the New England Patriots, it does not. It is simply an update of.
Oh, my gosh.
No.
Here we go.
That's totally the Patriot.
And these are actually copyrighted for us.
Cool.
It's good to have a vivid imagination, Mr. Meglio.
Can you pass that back?
It's like looking at the clouds, right?
For you to celebrate.
But I see.
Right. As Michael pointed out, they're copyrighted to us. So if anybody wants to be able to reproduce them, they're going to have to get permission from us to do it. That is a smart.
Keep making board member shirts. I'm thinking.
I don't know what you're waiting for. I'm going to need you.
We'll have ordering, we'll have ordering forms or we'll figure it out.
Let's go.
That's the team that's in the middle school now.
Blue and gold stripe.
No, they have the boat on the logo.
Okay. This is regarding the athletic contest admissions.
We got a boat on the logo.
And then we all said, yeah.
Then we got started looking at them.
And then, well, Jeannie didn't even know what we were voting on after this. What does it look like? Okay. This is the athletic contest admissions, which is a pilot program of being able to.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed for extension? Okay. What's your carry? By the way, it's the abolishment of the vacant decision.
Minus of us are right.
Oh, quitting the bus driver, which we have a second thought and with no information have decided to retain.
Correct.
Okay. So that would be the teacher's aid. Motion, please.
And the cook?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
So it is the teacher aid and the cook are the abolishment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed for extension? Okay. And I could ask this acceptance of resignation that John R. White has designed as the vice president of the Board of Education. Mr. White Walton Maine is a member of Trumas Perk Board of Education, however. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or any extensions? Okay. Motion carried. Moving on to board forum. So does anyone who can be the right to discuss or bring forth what you put in the order?
Said before, but I think great work on board goals. So thank you to everyone for their patience and work and diligence on those.
Yeah, it's very well done.
I also just wanted to thank Michael, Tina, Angie, and Kimberly and everyone who worked at getting the agenda out a couple of days earlier. It really, it just gave us the time we needed to get through it. I mean, you know, it's actually when there's so much to read, it just, it helps us to be prepared. So thank you.
We'll do it again.
And just remember that the payoff of that is a potential for more walk-ons.
Right. Okay.
Okay. Then, I'm going to motion to adjourn to the second session.
So moved.
Second.
For a particular, what was the reason? Tell me?
Yes. Matters associated with personnel.
Well, Joe, let me.